It is 6 o'clock. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Pascoe?
Here.
Jesperson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Delahoyd?
Here.
Stark is absent.
Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One C, acknowledgment of the Open Meetings Act poster that is posted by the south entrance back on that wall. One D, adoption of the agenda.
Some moved, there.
Any discussion? Take a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
One E, approval, consent, agenda items.
Some moved, there.
Take a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Two, public hearings. We do not have any. Three, sheriff's report. He is not here right now, so you can skip that. Four, public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? No? Okay. Five, approval minutes. That is consent, agenda six. Consideration claims and financial reports. Six A, claims for payment.
I move to approve claims for payment in the amount of $247,689 and 29 cents.
Sir.
Any discussion? All right, call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Six B, treasurer's report and budget and expense report is there for your...
No.
Oh, it is the first meeting. I'm sorry. Call for a vote. Oh, no. Yep, nope.
Where are we?
Yep. Sorry.
You've lost me.
Treasurer's report and budget and expense report do need to be approved by council.
Yep, they need to be approved. I'm...
Are we on keynote sales?
Yeah. Six B, treasurer's report and budget and expense report. Yes.
We did keynote and sales tax last meeting.
Yep.
Mine says keynote and sales meeting.
Are you on the wrong meeting?
Probably.
Okay.
But it's been flowing really well so far.
I think you motioned the right amount.
I did, some moved. To approve the... What do we approve?
Treasurer support.
Treasurer support.
Sir.
Invited expense.
Yep.
Second, thank you.
Okay, any discussion? All right, please call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
All right, seven, introduction of resolutions. Seven A is consent agenda. Seven B, consideration of resolution 2505 approving new fire and rescue department member, Ms. Shelby Miller.
That's you.
I believe she is in the audience.
I move to approve the new fire and rescue department member, Shelby Miller.
A second.
Hi.
Hi.
Just when I get a rush call at my house, just get there quick.
Okay.
Shelby, we would love for you to tell us just briefly a little bit about yourself, where you came from.
I'm from Hagler, Nebraska, on the other side of the state, Hennepin County. We've lived here for five years, my husband and son. I work at San Diego as a respiratory therapist. In their six and a half years, I've been doing it for eight. My dad's a paramedic, and he was on the local fire squad when I was growing up, so I watched him go contribute to the community, and I feel like that's what I want to do, too.
That's fantastic.
Excited about it.
Thank you so much for volunteering your time.
Do you know Eric Ben Nelson?
The name sounds familiar.
That's nice. She's a nurse there at a ER.
Okay, yeah. I'd be concerned if that sounded like him.
All right, let's go ahead and call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Congratulations. All right, nine. Nebraska Class NPAIT merger. Nine A, consideration of a letter of intent to pass a resolution authorizing investment of funds with Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust.
I move to consider a letter of intent to pass the resolution authorizing the investment of funds with Nebraska Public Agency Investment.
Sir.
Discussion.
I think it'd probably be good for the public, and especially for the recording, just to explain why we're doing this move.
So currently, the city of Waverly has funds invested with Nebraska Class, which is another public funds investment company. And Nebraska Class is merging with NPAIT. And so we will now be under the NPAIT will be the group, organization in charge of the investments. The city of Waverly has invested with NPAIT before, many years ago. And so this will not be anything that's unusual or outstanding.
Plus, they got a good rep that works with you, too, right?
So yes, there's a gentleman named Walker, who is the vice president of their investments. And we see him at many of our conferences and everything. And he's a very nice person, and we have great comfort in working with him.
Do resolutions need three readings or no?
No.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
Nine B, consideration of resolution 2506.
I move to consider the resolution number 2506, the Nebraska Public Agency Investment Trust enabling resolution.
Sir.
Discussion.
And this just basically outlines the people that are able to do the day-to-day operations of investing money.
Which is the same as what it was with Nebraska Class.
That is, thank you, yes.
All right, discussion? All right, call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
All right, ten, introduction of business and communications. Ten A, we are going to do a presentation on understanding Waverly's water supply.
All right. Can you click through the...
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Okay, so we haven't... Or we're ready to... We're getting into watering season, and we want to make sure that we share some information about the water system and our current situation. So I'll just go ahead and read through these for clarity's purpose. "In the Waverly area, two snow events in March helped improve drought conditions, shifting the classification from a moderate drought to an abnormally dry intensity. While this is a positive development, it is important to note that the region is still experiencing below-average moisture levels. Continued monitoring and conservation efforts remain essential as we move into the summer season." So you'll see here on the picture on the left, this was as of March 13th of 2025. We were in the moderate drought classification. And on this one, March 27th, two weeks later, the classification was changed to abnormally dry for northern Lancaster County. "During the winter months, when there is no lawn irrigation or outdoor watering, Waverly averages about 400,000 gallons of water usage per day. This represents our baseline indoor usage for homes, businesses, and industry, essentially what our community needs just to operate day-to-day. As the weather warms up and outdoor watering begins, that daily demand can easily double or even triple. Since 1950, precipitation in our region has followed a pattern of natural variability marked by cycles of wetter and drier years. In the past five years, we have seen less than 30 inches of precipitation each year. And you can see, this is marked out from 1950 to current day. And you can see where definitely peaks and valleys. Highest precipitation reached is about 40 inches on some years, and then lows in the 18s and 19s. And this is where we're at right now. And you can see that we have five years below 30 inches. The last time that that occurred was right around 2000. And our population was not... Just a little bit more than half of what it is now. Over the past decade, precipitation in our area has steadily declined, steadily declined, with 2022 marking the driest year at just 19.92 inches. This is a long-term... This long-term trend of reduced rainfall puts additional strain on our water supply, especially during high-demand periods and drought conditions. And so you can see where we are on a steady decline. The center line is a steady decline over the years, starting in 2014 to 2024. "As the annual precipitation has remained below 30 inches for the past five years, this has contributed to a noticeable decline in groundwater levels. The following slides display static water level trends over the past five years for each of our wells, giving a clear picture of how the aquifer has been impacted over time. The static water level refers to the depth from the ground surface to the water in the well when it is not actively pumping. By monitoring these levels at each well, we're able to track trends, plan for future demand, and make informed decisions about water conservation, infrastructure, and new well development." And so this is well four, this is well five, well six, well eight. And you can see, they all follow basically the same pattern, dropping anywhere from 12 to 10, 10 to 12 feet over time. And there's well nine, 10, and 11, still following the same trends. "We operate eight wells capable of pumping up to 2 million gallons of water over a 12-hour period. And that's meaning that the well pumps will be running consistently for a straight 12 hours. We could pump 12 million gallons of water, or 2 million gallons of water. However, the number of wells isn't the limiting factor. What truly matters is how much water is available in the aquifer. Even with strong pumping capacity, if groundwater levels continue to decline, our ability to meet demand could be compromised. Sustainable water management depends on both supply and usage working in balance." We're not the only ones relying on groundwater. Each dot on this map represents a registered well across the state. And there's varying types of wells. There's irrigation wells, are the green dots. Domestic wells are blue dots, and commercial wells are other blue dots. Livestock wells, especially out in the more central and western part of Nebraska, are the yellows. Orange dots are monitoring wells. A lot of the monitoring wells are located near population centers. Red dots are public water supply, so obviously in population centers. And then there's some brown dots in there as well that are just other, termed other wells. And this is a map that is from the Department of Environment and Energy. They put together this map. "During dry conditions, groundwater usage increases everywhere. As a result, static water levels decline statewide. This is not an issue that is unique to Waverly. It is a shared... It is a challenge shared by the entire region. Later this year, we will begin exploratory drilling in these targeted areas to evaluate future groundwater availability and potential pumping capacities within the Waverly area. This project will assess up to 13 possible sites for the development of a new well, testing both water quality and site suitability to determine the most viable location. Based on the results of these test wells, we may move forward with the process of adding a new production well as early as next year. All related study documents are available on our website for public review." So there's four areas that are kind of designated where, when we worked with Olson's, they did a site study. We're now working with JEO to help us develop information to share with property owners and then to manage the test well program. But this is the confluence area of Salt Creek and Camp Creek. Then there's just the Camp Creek area. This is where our existing well field is, what opportunities may be there. And then this is an opportunity seen near just the Salt Creek area. This is some information that was shared from Dave Miesbach, and he works for NDEE. This is some information that he shared when he came to talk to us one time. This talks about well depth and placement are limited by geology. So all of our wells are drilled to bedrock. So all of our wells are drilled as deep as they possibly can be. Groundwater is replenished by recharge, meaning the water that comes back and trickles through the ground to recharge the aquifer beneath it. Groundwater recharge is slow, approximately 2.3 inches per year. Groundwater movement is slow, about 110 to 160 feet per year. And drought conditions limit recharge. So obviously, if there's not water coming onto the top of the earth, it's not going to... There's no water going to be trickling through down to the aquifer. This is some information that was shared from the UNL extension when we had Dr. Giesler here to talk to us about watering tips for our lawns and how to keep our lawns sustained in drought conditions. They talk about, in the spring and the fall, water... Our lawns need approximately one inch of water per week. During the summer, when it gets hotter and typically drier. Heavy soils, meaning clay-type soils, will need about an inch and a half of water a week. Sandy soils would need approximately two inches of water a week. And the bottom part of this talks about Kentucky bluegrass. I remember he was talking about those with Kentucky bluegrass in their lawns. It has the ability to go dormant and then be restored when it receives enough rain. So it is extremely drought tolerant. They also recommended watering deeply and infrequently, meaning you soak and cycle. Look for wilting symptoms. Your lawn may change in color a little bit. Leaf blades don't bring spring back. That's a good signal that you may need to water your lawn. You can also test the moisture in your soil with a screwdriver. Then also, the city has available a moisture tester. And if anybody would like a free moisture tester, we have these available to anyone that wants to stop by the office and pick one up. So they work really well, and they tell you when you need to water your lawn. So the current watering schedule. So we are in a conservation policy right now. And this is perpetual for 365 days a year. "Water conservation remains the most powerful and effective tool for managing usage, especially as drought conditions continue. While infrastructure improvements and new wells can support supply, reducing demand through smart water use has the greatest immediate impact. Every drop we save helps preserve our aquifer and ensures a more resilient water system for the entire community." So just as a quick refresher, even-numbered houses, water on Sundays and Wednesdays. And odd-numbered houses, water on Tuesdays and Saturdays. There's no watering between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. That's the hottest times of the day, and you lose water due to evaporation. So your lawn is not getting the best use of the water that it gets, that it receives. You're still able to water your gardens, water your bushes, water your trees, wash your vehicles, fill swimming pools, hot tubs. The only thing that we are asking is that people really work on conservation on water that is used on your lawns. What we need most is consistent precipitation. So we are at Mother Nature's mercy. So we'll continue to watch for that. We thank everybody for doing your part to help us with our conservation efforts. If there's any questions, please reach out to us at the city office. There's a wealth of information on our website, so always go to the city's website. There's links in this PowerPoint presentation and links at the address for the PowerPoint presentation to a lot of the material also. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Counsel, questions, comments?
Yep. I think this is fantastic. Thank you for doing this. Couple of questions I thought you could address that we've seen pop up on social media. One of the big questions is, how do we have water conservation but still are planning building of new homes that will need water? Do you want to address kind of the thought process of having conservation but also growing the city?
So conservation is always smart. It's a natural resource. Water is a natural resource that we obviously cannot renew on our own. So conservation is always a good practice. Our infrastructure has the ability to serve the population that we have and a growing population as well. Our current infrastructure does. Right now, we are limited purely by the decreasing levels because of a drought situation.
If I remember right, we did a big study years ago that showed specifically what you're just talking about, that we had the proper infrastructure to grow a fairly large amount in the next decade or two.
10,000 people.
Up to 10,000 people.
Correct. Up to 10,000 people, and we're not even at 5,000 right now.
Correct.
If the water's in the ground.
Yeah.
And then when we came up to these conservation efforts, didn't we look around to other towns, similar sizes, around our area to help try to build those? Do you want to talk a little bit about how we came with our conservation that we're not necessarily alone in this matter?
Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're not... We haven't been. Even today, last week, if you look around at many communities in southeast Nebraska, there are restrictions going on all across southeast Nebraska. And when I say restrictions, I mean restrictions. I mean nothing. You can't do any wastewater, or they are shutting your water off without... I don't know if I want to say without warning, but they're shutting your water off. There cannot be any kind of wasting of water. They're not allowing you to water your lawn, fill your pool, or do any of those kinds of things. So this is not a Waverly issue. This is a drought issue. So we are trying to conserve until we can get out of a drought, really. I mean, to allow our aquifer to recharge.
I really appreciate the fact that you added the slide in there that we had experts come in and talk to us about watering lawns. We did consult experts back when we set the conservation efforts. It was under their recommendation that we set it to two days a week based on what they say is necessary for a healthy lawn. So it wasn't a number that was picked out of the air, and it wasn't a number to restrict it to brown lawns, certainly. So I really appreciate that we added that in as well.
And another thing I want to remind you, as we were having this conversation a year and a half, two years ago, one of the other things besides conservation efforts that was on the table was peak water increase in charges, right? So that was something else that we could have put into place that after 10,000 gallons of water, we can start charging you X amount of money. And that was voted down because we didn't want to do that. We would rather use conservation efforts to allow our aquifer to recharge. That's what we're trying to do, is allow, at the end of the day, we're trying to allow our water, our aquifer, to heal after drought. And so instead of restricting people or hurting them in a pocketbook by overcharging them because they may use 10,001 gallons or 15,001 gallons and charging them X number of dollars, we just said, please don't use your... Or don't water five days a week.
When we get back to normal rainfall, our aquifers will replenish.
Correct.
And we will get back to normal someday.
Well, I mean, you can look at the graph that was put in there. That it happens.
So it's like the stock market.
One of the other things I wanted to address is that recently, there was some media on the water conservation efforts. And someone who is identified as being a Waverly resident talked about their bushes and trees dying because there was no water. So I really appreciate that you put in this presentation that you are free to water your trees and bushes. As a matter of fact, all along during this process, we encourage the watering of gardens and trees, especially new trees, because we want those. There's a lot of new neighborhoods in Waverly, and we want to make sure that we have trees that are coming up. And so unfortunately, I think there is still some misunderstanding and lack of knowledge of what the conservation efforts actually are. We can water bushes, trees, gardens, those type of things. This is restricted to just watering of...
You can even fill your swimming pool.
You can even fill your swimming. And then the last thing I wanted to address, something that popped up on social media, was a complaint that this is the only utility that has ever been restricted by public, and that's just not true. When there is a massive supply-demand on electricity, often LEAs will do brownouts or restricted electricity through a system if they deem necessary as well. So this is asking for some conservation is not out of the normal for any utility service to do. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I appreciate the approach to... You know, I wasn't on the city council last summer when a lot of this was being discussed, but I appreciate the approach of education over penalizing, you know, people through increased cost. And so I think that approach has worked. I think it can continue to work. We just need to make sure that folks continue to follow the guidelines. And I think we can all have, you know, healthy lawns and trees and bushes and everything, and continue with that. So that's my hope.
I think, I mean, I think we've been... Like when the University of Nebraska came out, you know, they talked about watering one inch, one and a half inches a week, and watering longer time, deeper, you know? I don't... I think people should water their yard once a week and longer. You know, put that one inch down once a week and then... But I know people would get mad if they can't water two times. But my yard, I think, looks as good as 80% or 90% of houses in Waverly, and I water it once a week, if I water it all.
Yeah, this is a suggestion. You don't have to water twice a week.
Right.
You can.
I know. What I'm saying is, if we really get in trouble, further trouble, I don't see anything wrong with making it once a week, myself.
Well, let's hope that it rains and we don't have to go there.
Yeah, I don't want to water at all. I don't want our Lord to take care of that.
There you go.
The last part that I would say, and that you addressed, Stephanie, and again, I appreciate this as well, is that if folks have questions, the city is available to answer those questions. That's what we're here for, too. Our email addresses are online for the city of Waverly as city council members. So if folks have concerns or questions, feel free to reach out to me. I can tell you, since we started this, I think I've only been emailed maybe twice from residents. And so if you do have a valid concern, something that's bothering you, please bring it forth to us. This is the proper way of hashing out some of those concerns.
Right, and once again, you know, we are recording this meeting. We are putting out the newsletter. And every newsletter that we've put out this year has had information about our water in it. We are really trying to put out as much information as possible in the right avenue, in the right channels, to dispel any kind of misinformation. in the right channels to dispel any kind of misinformation that could be out there. So honestly, that's really the last thing I want to say is that I know sometimes it's hard and people forget that we all live here. Every single one of us that's elected lives in this community and raises our families here. And so these rules also apply to us. So we're not above anything else. We are still also doing this, but you can also ask us, I mean, we want, we, we are part of this as well. We are doing these conservation efforts. We want to, we're really trying to do the best we can at the end of the day. So a conversation would be really good. Asking questions would be really good. That's, that's really where accurate information will come from, is this room. So please let us know what questions and concerns you may have. That's it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Abby?
Yes.
Terry's four, 1331 Bailey Street. I'll put her on the list before you go. Has the city considered any contingencies in the event? This is not a cyclical event. Go back to your slide, Stephanie, if you can. Over the last 10 years, it's, granted, 10 years in, big issue right there. That's good.
Good.
Is a very, very short period of time. However, look at the trend line. That's that light line on the bottom graph there. It's downward. So what plans or contingencies have we looked at in the event that number one levels off on the lower end or number two continues on a downward trend?
I think that's what, can I answer?
Yeah.
I think that's what, what we're doing, looking for those, you saw on one slide there were four areas where we were trying to find new water through wells.
That's one.
That's one, new sources that way.
We have reached out and had conversations with the city of Lincoln. We've reached out and had conversations with, whose do we, Saunders? No, Sarpy. Sarpy County folks, didn't we?
We've talked with Lancaster County Rural.
Lancaster County Rural.
City of Lincoln right now is not interested as far as I understand, but down the road, if they tap into Nebraska City into the Missouri River, I think they're going to be looking for customers to sell water to. But that, that could be a long time down the road too though.
It's time. It is time driven, but yes.
Yes.
I mean, that, that's certainly a, a option. And particularly since both of their main feeder lines come right through the city of Waverly.
Yeah, we could just poke a hole in their pipe, right?
I think they'd notice.
But I am not a climatologist, I'm not a meteorologist, but I do absorb information. It appears we are at high risk of overall precipitation decreasing over our lifetimes and perhaps over several generations.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that city, particularly when we're expanding additional users, that we consider the possibility, if not the probability.
Terry, you know, 1950s, there were like global freezing.
In the 1950s, didn't have your 2025 technology.
I know, but things change is what I'm saying.
That is a fact.
And I appreciate the question and Abby and Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the Lincoln answer does seem like the obvious because like you said, there's this giant pipe that runs right through us, but it is far more complicated than just tapping in and running a pipe off of that.
Well, the other catch is it ain't going to be cheap.
Right.
No.
And if, if there is the continued decline in static water levels, it will not be just the city of Waverly that is experiencing significant problems. I mean, it will be regional and, and so I can assure you that every community is monitoring this as much as we are.
I realize that in order to keep people happy, they like to keep their yards green, but this is a situation that our social norms have created. Green lawns in this part of the country are not part of the natural thing. It's a very artificial construct.
That's what Terry, I've always been for. I think one, one day a leak watering is fine with me.
I don't water my yard, so.
So.
It's not pretty as yard on the block, but it's theirs. Anyway, that's enough. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, Stephanie. All right, 10B, consideration of an agreement with the State of Nebraska DOT.
I move that we consider an agreement with the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for advanced warning beacons and under pavement traffic sensors at the intersection of US Highway 6 and North 141st Street in Waverly.
Give me a second.
So quick rundown of what this is. This is something that I asked for several years ago and is finally going to happen. Probably three years ago, I requested to have warning lights put at 144th Street.
Especially the lights is like yellow, it's supposed to change.
Yes, yes. And so they are finally going to do that. Probably won't happen until November, I think is what you said. So that's what this is.
And they'll be on both sides, these ones?
Yeah. Some people say they are go faster lights, but also when a semi that's hauling, which we have a lot of semi truck, I mean, it does at least tell them to slow down. So hopefully it will help.
I think it's good.
Hopefully it'll help a few accidents.
It'll watch a break hard.
Was the money that would cost the city in the budget?
Yes. It was in the budget and we probably won't receive an invoice for our half of it until the next budget year anyway. But we did have a plan, just in case.
Anything else? All right, call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
All right, 10C, D, and E are all consent. Go to 10F, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for southeast Nebraska Affordable Housing.
I move to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Southeast Nebraska Affordable Housing Council's application to establish a middle income workforce housing investment fund in Lancaster County and the city of Waverly.
I second.
All right, discussion?
Can you just share a little bit more about?
Absolutely. So SNC, the Southeast Nebraska Development District, also operates as SNC, which is the Southeast Nebraska Affordable Housing Council, is submitting an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development to, they're going to apply for middle income workforce housing funds. Prior to this year, any community in Lancaster County was not eligible. The legislature did make a change to the qualifications for that and so now other communities outside of Lincoln in Lancaster County can apply for those funds. So SNC is going to apply for some of those funds. It'll be, they're asking for a million dollars in workforce housing funds. Those will be used for down payment assistance and also construction costs for workforce housing in various communities in Lancaster County and definitely focusing, with some focus on Waverly being the largest other community in Lancaster County. And I've tried to work closely with them to show our, our desire to get some affordable housing in our community. So the house, the projects they like to do a lot, in a lot of communities are like infill. So infill lots, lots that are currently vacant or need an uplift on them. So if those kind of lots become available in the community, those would definitely be one of the areas that we're targeting.
And this letter appears doesn't have us really mean to pay anything. It's just a letter of support and that letter of support is going towards saying that Waverly is, is interested in having those, those homes open in our community.
So this, this one, so the next one is the letter where we do not, are not committing anything. This, this actual program, the city would be committing some funds, $10,000 of funds for this program because this is actually targeting more affordable homes. Their, their hope is to be able to sell these homes at a price point under, just under $300,000 for a 1,300, up to 1,300 square foot home with a unfinished basement. But this is a, this is truly an affordable house, more of an affordable housing program with SNC.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
10H, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Nebraska Housing Resources Application.
I move to consider the authorizing the mayor to sign the letter, commitment for the Southeast Nebraska Affordable Housing Council, middle income workforce housing grant application matching funds in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Sir.
Discussion?
So this just signifies that we're committing the $10,000?
Up to.
Up to $10,000.
All right, call for a vote, please.
Motion carried, three to zero.
So I want to make sure we didn't miss something in there because there's three of them. There's F, G, and H.
So David, David's motion.
Yeah, I, I think I read it wrong.
Yeah.
That he motioned it right. He motioned it right, I read it wrong.
Yes.
So now 10H.
Yes.
Authorization of authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Nebraska Housing Resources Application.
All right. I move to consider the authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Nebraska Housing Resources Application for investment funds from the middle income workforce housing funds for builder construction loans on qualified new single family for sale houses in Waverly.
Sir.
So this is also another workforce housing program. This is with the Nebraska Housing Resources Council. They also wanted to submit an application for middle income workforce housing funds from DED. Their requests, they are just requesting a letter of support only, no matching funds or anything from the city. Their funds, if they are so awarded funds, would be used for builder construction loans to buy down the interest rate on construction projects. There's a, someone who's interested in building in Waverly Ridge to, to build some, let's say spec type of homes in Waverly Ridge.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero.
All right, 11 Committee Reports. Do you have something for human services, Park and Rec?
I do. Okay. So first and foremost, we have hired a Park and Rec Director as of yesterday. We got the background check and everything completed. Our new hire's name is Clayton Hubbard. He currently works at UNO. He's the Assistant Director of Competitive Sports at UNO. He's also worked with Special Olympics. He leads, he has led a campus field rejuvenation project and he manages the 12 sport clubs at University of Nebraska at Omaha. So we are pleased to have Clayton starting. His first day will be April 21st, Monday, April 21st.
Young girl or a guy?
Doesn't matter.
Somewhere in the middle.
Somewhere in the middle.
Employable.
Employable, yeah. So anyway, Clayton will be starting. He's excited to get started and we're excited to have him here, so.
Me too.
The restrooms in Wayne Park have been opened and so those are all ready to go. Scott, our Assistant Park and Rec Director, has been working with the schools to get the, we've had lots of baseball games already so far this year, high school baseball, so he's working with the school and makes sure everything's going well out at Lawson Park. The school district is making arrangements to improve the catcher's area around the bullpens. They're doing an improvement project on the bullpens out there at Lawson Park at their expense. So they're putting in about $1,300 worth of work out there to improve the bullpens for everyone. So we appreciate that cooperative attitude with the schools. Angela, our swimming pool manager, is working on getting everything set up for the swimming pool. We're just starting new software, getting all of her lifeguards and other staff hired. She's been doing a really good job and I will say kudos also to Cheris, our city treasurer. She's been really helping out getting stuff ramped up and ready to go for the pool this year, starting this new software. Without a Park and Rec Director right now, we're all kind of splitting up some of the tasks and so Cheris has really helped out with the pool.
Does that end at May, target date?
Yes, we usually are, we usually open the Saturday before Memorial Day. So, and all of the signing up for pool passes and everything will be online this year. So we're spent, those ladies have spent a lot of time getting things ready. So we'll be having some trials on that here soon to make sure we're ready to go, go live. And then last thing, we've been hiring seasonal staff for the summer. So we have some parks seasonal that are returning and then all of our mowing staff also has been returning. So everybody's ramping up and getting ready to go for the summer.
Will she be pretty good for staffing the pool and everything?
We are, yeah. I think she, her goal was 30 lifeguards and I think she might just be one or two short.
All right, thank you, Steph. 11B, Public Works, Erin?
The exciting news is that two meetings ago when we approved the new manure spreader, it came in and so.
It is exciting.
Today, it's like shiny.
Not for long. The unfortunate part is it came right after they finished up spreading 79 tons of dry bio solids on the field. So it'll be new and ready to go when it's time to do that. They cracked seal north 130th Street. They've been out with the street sweeper, going through the streets trying to get up a lot of the sand and gravel, things like that from the winter. So they've done a really nice job of cleaning that up and they put a lot of work in. They pretty much had it going every day for a full week. School zone flashers were repaired on Amberly. 15 sewer laterals were televised for the water main replacement project and then over on Danvers, they've been replacing the water line. So all the water main is in the ground and hooked up and the project should be done in a couple of weeks.
Great. 11C, Public Health, David?
10 calls for service so far in April. And they also received a $1,000 grant from Frontier for a grain auger, for grain entretment equipment, which is extremely important in our neck of the woods. And then of course, we have a new member. Congratulations again to our new member.
Yay. All right, thank you. 11D?
Nothing to report.
11E, Stephanie?
I just want to let everybody know that I closed out the CCCFF grant, which was the $562,000 grant that we got from Nebraska Department of Economic Development for the Aquatic Center. So we made our last, final reimbursement request for $281,000. We've received those funds. So now we will be able to refinance that, that second bond that we had for the pool. We'll refinance that down to a $1.5 million bond. And so in one of the upcoming meetings, we'll have all of the paperwork that's associated with refinancing that bond.
we'll have all of the paperwork that's associated with refinancing that bond. Tree City USA Arbor Day Celebration is tentatively scheduled for April 25th, which is a Friday, the last Friday of April, which is typically when Arbor Day is celebrated. We're working with Justin Everson to have a small presentation, possibly at the intermediate school on that day. So and there'll be more information shared about that once we get all the details finalized. And then on Waverly Ridge, I was just going to update you. The sewer is about 90% installed for the entire first phase. The box coverts that will go under some of the streets in that part of the development are, the box coverts are 70% complete. They're just getting started on the water and then storm sewers and paving will come after that. So the sewer is just about in so that they move to the next one, which will be the water, water veins. That's it.
All right, I don't have an agenda item on here, but I want to talk real fast. I want to mention that last couple of weeks, you know, we only have 13 employees, like, not in the summertime where we have Aquatic Center and Seasonal and all that kind of stuff. So when we're down one employee, we fill it. The city, the employees fill it. So I want to just take a real quick moment to express my gratitude to everyone, Stephanie included. Everyone has really picked up slack, picked up everything that's been going on, not knowing, you know, how to maybe do a lot of stuff that's been going on. Scott, who's only been here for nine months, has been doing an incredible job. The school started playing games two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, March 21st, I think. And, you know, they, that's not rec. That's not rec baseball. That's, you know, that's high school baseball. So they're very particular on how things have to be. He's done an incredible job. The mowers, our city mowers, we have four, three, three or four city mowers. And one of the things that they had to do, that had to be done before they could start mowing, Wayne Park had small branches all over. I don't know if anybody walks Wayne Park, but they're all over because of all the trees we've been cutting down and windstorms and all that kind of stuff. We don't have any extra help to cut or to pick up branches, so they can't start mowing. They all decided, you know what, let's go do that. So these four mowers all went out and picked up branches today. So I just want to give kudos to, you know, a lot of times, these people that work in this office and work for our city, they only hear the snark, they only hear the bad comments, they only hear the crap that doesn't get done. So I just want to thank them for all the tireless work that they've been doing over the last several weeks, the extra work they've been doing on top of their actual job. So thank you, there's two of you in the room. Thank you to everyone else that's been picking up the slack. It's going to hopefully get easier in a couple of weeks and then you can go back to your, you know, normal jobs. But thank you very much and great work to you guys.
Kudos. I just did a quick math. If we have about 4,500 people in Waverly, the city of Waverly employs about 0.02%. So I mean, that's how small the city of Waverly's.
Team is.
Like team, actually, is compared to how many people are in our community.
I mean, incredible. They do, they do a great job all the time, so. 12, adjournment.
So moved.
Sir.
Call for a vote.
Motion carried, three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 6:54.